We stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now he's chirping.
What is that? Is that Bob? We have a roll call.
Mayor Hasler.
Here.
Alderman Grimmoncher.
Here.
Alderman Mooney. Alderman Donovan.
Eric.
Alderman Jokers.
Eric.
Alderman Hook.
Alderman Stupi.
Eric.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Rozika.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good. We have approval of the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Now we'll have the election results.
It's like a certification.
Just a yearene vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we'll be swearing in our new members.
Okay, just raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye. I'm Anonlin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess all the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess all the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of Alderman.
For the office of Alderman.
Of the city of Saint Genevieve, Missouri.
Of the city of Saint Genevieve, Missouri.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Missouri.
And the state of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws of the state of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws of the state of Missouri.
Affecting cities of the lower class.
Affecting cities of the lower class.
And the ordinances of the city of Saint Genevieve, Missouri.
And the ordinances of the city of Saint Genevieve, Missouri.
And that I will faithfully demean myself in the office of Alderman.
And that I faithfully demean myself in the office of Alderman.
Of the city of Saint Genevieve, Missouri.
Of the city of Saint Genevieve, Missouri.
For which I was elected on the third day of April 2018.
For which I was elected on the third day of April 2018.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now he's just a citizen.
Now we'll have another roll call.
Mayor Hasler.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Mooney. Alderman Donovan.
Eric.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Alderman Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Rozika.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good. Well, it takes us, we don't have any presentations or personal appearance, so we'll take us to Martin's report, the City Administrator's report.
Okay. First item also relates to an agenda item. We received responses, three responses to the request for qualification for the water tower design. Since the county commission is participating with us in the financing of this, I met with the county commissioner, presiding commissioner, and we recommend that you approve a contract with Cochran Engineering. They have the qualifications. The thing that, you know, these requests for qualifications, everybody who submits is qualified. So it kind of comes down to discretion, except in this case, we worked with Cochran. They did our last major water project. We know how responsive they are. There was no questions about their attentiveness to our needs, so it kind of, that's kind of swung the decision. And so that contract is here for you to look at. The IDA met, that wasn't noteworthy, except that I need to sometimes remind people what the IDA is. You have an Industrial Development Authority. It exists under a statute in the state of Missouri that allows it to issue tax-exempt bonds. There was a time in the eighties when this was like going great guns. Bonds were being issued for all sorts of things. Since then, Congress has limited it. But we keep the IDA in existence, and frankly, it's, the members are, the Rotary Club kind of takes responsibility for making sure it stays staffed, although you have to appoint the members. And they maintain their existence in the event that an employer would come to town and want to do financing through this tax-exempt instrument. Other than that, there's some outstanding bonds that other entities have issued that occasionally refinance, and they meet to do the refinancing, but generally, they don't have any business unless something comes up. But it's important, I think, to, if they're willing to participate, to keep them in good standing in case we need it. Gosh, six years ago, we polled the fuel suppliers in Saint Genevieve to see if anybody would give us a break on fuel purchases if we use them exclusively. Casey's responded, and they were the only ones who were willing to do it at the time, and they gave us a five cent per gallon discount. BP came up with a program recently, offering a ten cent per gallon discount. So I went ahead and signed up with BP, so now we have two sources. And the staff is instructed to look at the price on the sign and deduct the appropriate amount, five cents or ten cents, and use the station that gives us the best per gallon deal. And so now we're using BP as often as we are Casey's, because the prices aren't always the same. You probably noticed that. Sometimes ten cents off still doesn't get you to where the other one is with five cents off. But anyway, that'll save us on our fuel cost. Reported to you when the Burlington Northern removed the crossing that was our access to the levee, they have replaced it. However, while they have replaced it, they refuse to commit to its permanence. So we don't know how long it's going to stay there, but for the time being, they have replaced it, and I have a feeling it'll stay there for a long time. They just aren't willing to make a commitment. Last time we met, there was some discussion when we were talking about water towers, about the Blaine Water Tank, Blaine Street Water Tank, and nobody seemed to know why it was abandoned. Gene Thurman, somebody who I know from a former life of mine, and was the water manager here, came in and informed me that that was done while he was here, and he remembers. As it turns out, that tank is controlled by an altitude valve. Basically, when the water level drops, the valve opens, the water level fills back up, and then the valve closes, and it just functions off the water demand and the altitude of the water in the tank. That was causing problems for Mississippi Lime, our main customer, because it, when it would open, when they were kind of at their peak demand period, they'd have drops in pressure, and they were getting kind of inconsistent water service. The solution to it is a SCADA system, which is a computer-controlled system that you could set to fill at certain times, not just when the altitude drops. And then you could work around the peak demand period without causing problems for the customer. I said, "Well, why didn't you do that?" He said, "We didn't have the money." That's kind of like a lot of things. It's about a $10,000, $15,000 item, and I have no recommendation for you, except I think we're going to take a look at that tank to determine whether it's structurally sound. I think we're going to ask the engineers, an extension to our contract, to advise us on a control system that would work, and then once I have something in hand, I'll come back to you, and we can decide whether or not we want to do it. I think the other, Steve's point is, the new tank will probably satisfy DNR as far as our residual storage is concerned. So we may not even need to go down that road, but we're going to take a look at it. And finally, the state legislature, there are members of the state legislature who have, for some reason, decided local government is bad. And so they sponsor legislation that, as we have experienced with Senate Bill Five, causes a burden for cities like Saint Genevieve when we weren't even, we weren't part of the problem. Well, another one is coming out of the House of Representatives. I've contacted our legislators to tell them that this is bad law for most of the state. I don't know, I do know what the problem is. The problem is that when the economy is strong and builders are building, local governments have to review their submittals from builders for building permits with the staff they have at hand. And they can't, it's a technical skill, and you can't just hire somebody off the street and all of a sudden make them a plan reviewer. So they either have to hire somebody to do that, or they have to pay an engineer at a cost they can't afford to take the overload. So most cities have like a one week, or at worst, a 10-day turnaround on building permits. And most cities will do what's called a master, so a builder can submit a set of plans that gets approved, and it doesn't have to be re-approved every time they build that, off that set of plans. They can reverse it, or they can do different things to it without having to go back through the review process. We don't have that problem. When a plan comes in here, we look at it, maybe two days, depending on how complicated it is. So the thing they're trying to address isn't the problem. Likewise, with the Airbnbs, you know, we have a regulation for Airbnbs, and we make sure that that use is compatible with, when it takes place in a residential zone district. Well, they want to take our ability to regulate that totally away from us. So I'm just letting you know, if you have a conversation with one of our elected representatives, please ask them to consider the effect that bills like this have on cities the size of Saint Genevieve and our ability to serve our citizens. My lecture is over.
Any questions for Martin? Next up would be Kenny, he's not here tonight.
Let me do one more thing.
Oh, Martin's got it.
Sorry, everyone, I cast these around.
Oh, good, I'll swear.
In our last meeting, we talked about this, and we're not going to talk about this tonight, because it's not on the agenda, whether or not we'd be interested in putting together a subdivision or portion of the property off Progress Parkway and making it available to, for developers to express interest on whether or not they're even going to do it. This is a preliminary layout for a subdivision on the property that's across from the apartments. And it's 38 lots, 50-foot fronts, which is small, because the goal, remember, is to get housing on the market in that $180,000 to $200,000 range, and you can't do that with a house that's 15, 1800 square feet. So with 50-foot fronts and a smaller footprint on the house, we can, you know, we can probably get that done. The mayor and I looked at a subdivision up, I think they've told you this already, up in Herculaneum, where this has been done in a portion of the subdivision. And I think that's a, you know, they're not big houses, but they look nice. So we'll have a work session coming up to talk about roads.
The end of the month, yeah, the next meeting we'll have.
Hold on to that. Don't have to hold on to it. Consider that.
Yeah.
And kind of go out and look where it would be, so we can discuss it at our next, at our work session.
Right, our work session. Where's that located, that one you saw?
If you stand in front of the apartments on...
No, I'm in the one you're saying.
Oh, Herculaneum?
Yeah.
If you get off at the Herculaneum exit, instead of turning right to go to Herculaneum, you'd go, turn left on McNutt Road.
Yeah.
And it's Providence Place is the name of the subdivision. And you had to kind of find the street where this was done, because it's like the third right, I think.
It's pretty big, yeah, it's a big subdivision.
That's a big subdivision, with lots of, lots of different price points. I mean, it's got, you know, these bigger homes, and nobody had done this until the engineer, Goro, that we talked to, said, "You ought to go look at this. This is the kind of thing that might work." And we did.
Okay. I think you can get on Google Maps. Satellite D.
Is this the same property that already has an option on?
I've got options expired.
Okay. What happened to, what was it asked about?
That's enough questions about. We'll talk about that in the work session. Joe, stop.
That's a different project.
No, stop. We'll talk about it. We will talk about it at that work session, or our next meeting, okay? Thank you. Anybody got any questions for Kenny's report? I left him over, maybe Mark can answer him, but it's pretty...
There's a comment in there that he's waiting for me on a grant. That, he just, that was a cut and paste problem. He's not waiting for me anymore, and we just, we wanted to...
Clear your off.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's mowing season.
You guys got my report? You got any questions, or...
How's your staff getting this mowing done all the time?
We're keeping up with it so far.
I mean, you got full staff?
Yeah.
One thing we're doing, I saw this at Valley Football Field, and apparently it's been there forever, and I just noticed it, is they put a strip of belting under all their chain-link fences, so you can mow up to the belting, and it's going to eliminate all the weed-eating on the chain links. So Mississippi Lime brought us a 680-foot roll of it, so we've been getting that put in, it's going to save a lot.
Save your strength, too.
Mm-hmm. We did, managed to get some patching done this week. We got point base and parkwood in a lot better shape.
Use new dent for the scotch table?
We used the old one. When the new one came in, it was missing the ratchets that hold the canopy, and I got them, UPS brought them yesterday, so...
What was the issue with cleaning the basement at City Hall?
There was just a bunch of old police department stuff, and...
We had a, something's not, failed.
But we'd already hauled a lot of it.
Damaged some records.
Oh, did?
Yeah. So we're going to, the same one needed to be saved, and we're going to ask you to clear the others. Allow us to destroy the other ones.
And we had to take the delivery of the salt?
Yeah. By the end of March. So we got it, we had room. It's already paid for, and hope we don't need it next year either.
Right. We do just cover it up, so it doesn't melt away?
Been cleaning a lot of ditches and storm drains. Us and the lines been working together on some of them.
Anything? Questions, comments? Thank you, Gary. Thank you. Ms. Carla.
Hi.
Hello.
So you have my report in front of you, and it's not a lot. Yes, Mayor?
Well, I realize this will be your last meeting, so, you know, it's...
Yes, it will.
Appreciate, oh, you've only got to work with you for a year, so, but we're going to miss you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm really going to miss you.
Yeah, it's hard, really. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
But you do live in the city, and we have planning committees and stuff to keep you involved.
Yeah.
Never forget, we know where you live.
That's right.
Right.
And we wish you the best.
Thank you.
I'm sure we all do.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions on the report?
See, that was Kenny, you thought it was going to be... I said, "They're going to give you a heart..."
No.
Thank you.
How about Joe?
Thank you. Thanks, Carla.
We already did my email, so, thank you, Carla. Alrighty, that takes us down to committee reports. Gary, I wanted to talk to you about, would you be willing to be our automatic rep on the TTC and the TAC?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We'll put you in the place thick on that one.
Okay.
Alrighty. Any other committee reports? Well, we'll find a place for Bob. I got other committees. I think he needs to be on the park board.
There you go.
I'll get him, I'll get him on.
Yes, we do.
Alright. Public comments. Mr. Bill, come on up here.
We're going to have, okay.
Last meeting, I told you all about Bill and a meeting, we talked a little bit about Narcan, and I asked, Bill's just going to come and make some public comments about it. He's going to, there's going to be a meeting, I'll let him talk to you.
Correct.
I wanted you to meet him and know where this all stemmed from, and there was some conversation with our attorney and Eric, which will be some more of that as we get more information on it. But I just wanted to bring the board up to speed on what's going to happen on April the 25th.
Okay, well, first of all, Mayor, thank you for making me a part of this and taking interest in this great cause. Also, the chief of police has joined in. My name is Bill Kramer, I'm a union miner, and I'm with Labor's Local 830. Probably about three months ago, all the leaders of our locals went to our district council meeting, and we heard a woman by the name of Nicole Browning speak, and she told us a story of, which had lasted about an hour and a half, of how America is making the transformation from legal prescription drugs into heroin and Narcan. Just, it's, it was just a wonderful, complete program. And I was so taken by that program, I had our safety man from out at the quarry come and convinced our quarry to start putting Narcan in our jump kits out at work, because people have problems. It's no different than alcoholism or anything else. I mean, people have problems with prescription drugs, it's no secret. So I spoke to our board, and our board at our local wants to give Saint Genevieve, our community, a gift. And that gift is to bring Sandra down, or not Sandra, I'm sorry, I'm ahead of myself, Nicole Browning, I want to bring Nicole Browning down, and she's going to give the speech that she gave us, she gave us out at our annual refresher meeting, and she gave at our district council meeting on this, how this all takes place, and what Narcan is, and how it works. Wish I had something written up in front of me, I don't, I thought maybe I could wing it. You've seen my presentation.
Yes.
And I can mail it to anybody. In my perspective, from my perspective, I guess, after learning the hard way, I think any household that has a fire extinguisher and is willing to use that fire extinguisher to try and put out a small fire in their house is going to cost $50 to $100. Narcan is going to cost about $100 to have in your house. If you're willing to protect your house, surely you're willing to protect the people in it. It's very easy to use, it's foolproof, people don't have to worry about, well, what if it's not an overdose, what if it's not that? Nicole will, she's going to go over all of that. There is no danger of accidentally spraying somebody and causing problems. All Narcan is, is it's an opiate receptor blocker. So once the Narcan goes in your system, it'll block the receptor, and the patient generally will start breathing again. It's just a, it's something everyone should really have and really care. You can't, we can't depend on the fire department, or the rescue, or other sources. We got to start, the people of the community have got to start taking control of their own households. Since I've started on my little crusade, the community center, which is where it's going to be held, they've decided to co-sponsor with me, which is great. It's a nice, neutral location, it represents health and well-being, so that's where it's going to be. We have about 100 seats, I'd love for everyone in this room to attend it, just so you have information about it. Once you hear Nicole speak, you're going to be, you're going to walk away with a whole new sense of what this heroin and prescription drugs is all about, and how easy it is to get hooked. And it has been endorsed. We have, we've had some people that have actually come out and said, "I want this. I want, I want my name to be attached to that." One is the mayor. The mayor said, "Yes, I want, I want my name to be involved, I want, I want to be part of this." Chief of Police back here, Eric Bennett, he said, "Yes, we want to be involved with it." Sandra Bell at the County Health Department, she wants to be listed as an endorsement on this. It's a very important topic. The statistics for 2017 have not come in yet as far as the death toll. Missouri ranks 19th out of all the states that's having the highest incident rate, and I think, if I'm not, please don't hold me to my dates, but I think that since like 2006 to date, where our, our death rate has gone up like 123%. So, you know, it's out of control, it's a devastating thing. I think 60,000 people plus, I think I've heard as high as 64,000 died in 2016 from overdoses, which, believe it or not, is comparable to the Vietnam War, or the whole Vietnam War, we didn't lose that many people. We lost more than the Vietnam War in one year to heroin and prescription drug abuse. So it's, it is an epidemic. It's, it's something we can't deny, it's something we, as citizens, have got to, we've got to take charge of. And education is going to be our only fight right now. The hospital up here has started to recently, instead of giving out a handful or a bottle full of opiates, they, they have started to give out a day's worth, or two days' worth. And if that doesn't work, you can go back, in some cases, maybe get another day, and if, if you're still having a problem with pain, then, then you're referred to a pain specialist. The doctors have started recognizing, hospitals have started recognizing, the whole country started recognizing now that maybe they've overdone it in the past, and we're trying to dial it down. Problem is, is a pill, and which Nicole will talk about, a pill may cost you $20 or $30, and a hit of heroin will only cost you about $5. So while we're going to close that demand, at some point, we won't have as many people getting hooked accidentally, and hopefully that'll bring our numbers down back into control again. So that's our, you know, that's what this meeting is about. It has nothing to do with if you have a problem, this is just understanding the drug, understanding the impact, and people can accidentally take an, get an overdose. I might have pills laying around my house, or have taken them before, they might be in my medicine cabinet, I got a grandchild, or somebody that has a headache and they take one, and now all of a sudden, you've put an opiate into a, into an adolescent mind, and they're changed forever. You know, it's just that easy. Now, if you have Narcan in the house, and they have to overdose accidentally, you know, you get them back. So that's what, that's what it's all about. It'll be on the 25th of this month at 5:30 at the community center. We have 100 seats that are available, and I'd be honored to have every one of you. If anyone cares to get on the endorsement list, I try every week to put this on Facebook on what's happening in Saint Genevieve, just to kind of get the word out. I don't, I'm not real big into advertising, and I'm working with a really restricted budget, so I appreciate this exposure. I mean, this is another 25 people that, you know, are going to get...
On television.
Oh, okay. Is it up there? I guess it's up there. Yeah. So, so, yeah, hey, behave at Saint Genevieve, yeah. So does anyone have any questions about...
I do have a comment.
Okay.
The Rotary Club sponsors drug takebacks throughout the year in both the city and the county.
Right.
And I just am amazed, whenever we have one of these, how many, not hundreds, thousands of pills get turned in.
That is amazing, that's, that's wonderful.
And then if anybody has over-prescribed medication they want to get rid of, the sheriff's office has cooperated with us, and there's a drop box there, and all the pills that are collected, whether it's in the drop box or through our community collections, go to the sheriff's incinerator, and they're burned.
Which is a great cause.
Do not put them down in the commode.
Please don't. No, that's, no, no pill, no pill should go in the, in the toilet or down a drain. One other thing I wanted to mention, this, like I said, this program that we're... One other thing I wanted to mention, this, like I said, this program that we're having is a gift from our local, but we don't intend to stop there. What we're trying to do is get enough people on board to keep these kind of programs going, which Mayor and I have talked about before. So, we don't wanna stop here. We wanna keep, we wanna keep it going, so.
I'm the outgoing president of National Education Association for St. Genevieve. And I know the person is taking over from me. And this may be something that they also would wanna get their arms around, especially because of our school.
Yeah.
So, I'll get this out and put you in contact with our new president because maybe we can work together as you and me.
That'd be great. If you want, before I leave, I'll actually send you my information and we'll all get together and we can exchange. Okay, perfect, thank you.
And that's, thank you very much, Bill. And if you get a chance to talk to him off-camera about, he's got a personal story about a daughter.
Yes.
And that touched my heart. And I, and I've dealt with this personally too. I've been involved in two heroin overdoses and Narcan wouldn't help the people that I was involved in. But it would, it would have been, it did in his case. So, it's very important and we're gonna take this fight. You know, Sandra Bell has been with the, we've been talking to the county commissioners with the health department. Where, you know, this opiate fight, we're gonna take it to the schools because we're never, ever gonna cut the supply off. The supply is endless. But what we can do is, is cut the need off. If we can get people well and educated and keep them from doing that, the demand for the drugs will be no more. We can cut the demand off. The supply is endless, but the demand, we can, we can slow that down. And we wanna start in our community. So, it's near and dear to my heart because it's everywhere.
And the schools are a great place to start too, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
They, quite honestly, we've discussed it and a lot of times, the children coming home from school might be actually the first responders. They might be the ones that are gonna find mom or dad that need, you know, Narcan, our brother or sister. You know, some of the smaller kids. And we recommend bringing the smaller children, maybe 12 and up, 10 or up. If they, you know, if they have an aptitude to sit through something like that, bring them up and let them, let them sit in. It's appropriate for all ages. There's nothing scary, no scary slides or anything. It's all educational, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Unlative.
That'll take us to the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. There's no old business, so we're going to new business. Bill number 41, 4213, an ordinance approving a disposal, a proposal from Van Devenner Engineering for the purchase of a submersible wastewater pump in an amount not to exceed $8,750. All in favor?
Aye.
Bill number 4214, an ordinance approving a bid proposal from Exxon Enterprises Incorporated for the purchase of five tasers in the amount not to exceed $7,433 and amending the general fund budget, number 10, policy number 16.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bill number 4215, an ordinance approving a bid proposal from Turnkey Mobile Incorporated for the purpose of, for the purchase of two mobile data terminals in the amount not to exceed $7,600.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then bill number 4216, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a proposal for professional design services with Cochrane Engineering for a new elevated storage tank on Progress Parkway.
Before you vote on that, Chris Boone from Cochrane is here. Just wanted you to know that there's somebody here to answer your questions if you have any.
Okay, I have some questions though.
And Mark had some comments on a couple of items that were in the agreement. One had to do with arbitration, where in their original version, Cochrane had the, it was their sole discretion as to whether or not we went to arbitration. That's been changed. Either party can arbitrate, can ask for arbitration. And that final paragraph was deleted from the agreement with Chris's consent. So, those are the changes that were made. Now, ask away.
I just, I'm brand new tonight, so I'm just trying to catch up to speed here real quickly, okay? So, in my understanding, that this is gonna be on city property?
Yes.
Okay. If the water park uses this on county property, are they paying for the water?
Yes.
Okay. You probably already covered this, I just wanna make sure I'm on the same page. We're getting the funds through a bond for this?
It'll be a loan and from MRV Bank.
MRV Bank. And this is for the pre-construction cost? Your proposal, your bid, or your-
It's, it's a combination, yes. Design, survey, design, geotech, that's all pre-construction.
Right, pre-construction.
Construction inspection services, those will be during construction.
Do we have any idea how much the construction costs are gonna be?
It's, we're gonna bid two or three different tank sizes and two or three different types of tanks. I'm wanting to say it was, the total project was pushing 1.5 million, all-in, soft cost and hard cost?
Well, that's higher than we expected to be, but that's order of magnitude. This amount represents less than-
It's probably somewhere between a million and a million and five. I, I just-
This will be less than 10% is engineering cost.
Yes, oh, definitely. Is that what you're asking? I'm sorry, I thought you were asking for construction costs.
I was asking for construction costs.
Okay.
I know, I'm just commenting.
And you may not be able to speak to this, but if we're gonna take a million and a half dollars to build something like this, plus eighty thousand dollars for what you're proposing, what are we doing for the people in point basins, the infrastructure, for people who are getting flooded basements right now? Is this gonna be anything that helps to improve our infrastructure? Or is it just-
It wouldn't be addressing any kind of stormwater flooding though.
Okay. So, we're talking about two million dollars plus for a new tank, even though we have a lot of problems on it?
Wait, wait, no, two million dollars plus now, that's-
1.5 plus.
Well, we're, that's on the high end of it, so we're, you know, I, I don't know where the two million dollars plus comes in with the water tank, with the water, with the, with the elevated water tank, so.
So, let's say, let's say, let's say one and a half million dollars. Still, I mean, I just wanna make sure I do the right thing. Cause I hear a lot of people talking about flooding basements and they want things fixed.
You're right, there's-
So, before we move forward on one and a half million dollar investment, I think we need to talk about this more.
We can borrow money for the water tank. We could not do this project today.
Okay.
Because we are making debt service on certificates of participations that take our available cash from that source, so we couldn't, we wouldn't do it. County has a need and they're willing to participate with the city on an intergovernmental arrangement to finance this construction. It doesn't just fill the need of the county. It responds to a comment that the Department of Natural Resources has relative to our storage. We have less than the amount of storage, stored water than DNR would otherwise like us to have. And this will solve that problem, I think. Secondly, it will make water system improvements that have kind of some benefit to point base, but it's not the stormwater issue, it's the kind of water provision issue. We did find a major break in the sewer line since the point base folks visited us.
Okay.
That Steve and his crew have fixed. We've been monitoring the lift station into which this water was going. And what was happening is that the opening was at the underground, obviously, in the bottom of a detention pot. So, all the water is being directed to the detention pot and then getting into the sewer line and going to the lift station.
Okay.
He fixed it.
Okay.
Monitoring that lift station, it is rarely, it's not full. And the pipe that discharges from it, instead of running full during rain events now, is running at never more than half.
Less than half.
Less than half.
Okay, I just, okay. So, I'm just telling you, since I, before I was even sworn in tonight, I had people contacting me from all over the place wanting me to make sure I ask these questions.
Alright.
Because there are some people who are hot that we're gonna spend a lot of money on something that we don't, that they, they feel that their needs aren't being met and we're gonna get ourselves in debt even more. I just wanted everybody to know that, right? Cause I've had probably 12 phone calls.
Okay, and speaking into that, this is unique because the city's not bearing the whole burden of this water tank up there. The county is paying half, would be upwards of half of this amount of money. So, take that 1.5 million, that high figure, let's cut that in half too. Which the city, they don't have to, but they're doing that because of their need and the city's gonna benefit greatly out, the whole city's gonna benefit greatly out of that. So, that's, that's gotta be a factor in there too.
That's good to know.
That was a big factor, that was a big factor for me, cause they've agreed to, to help us with this project.
Okay.
The only thing, the only thing the water park has really done here is change the timing of how soon we have, that we need to do it and the size of the tank. No matter what, we were eventually gonna have to put one out there, whether they build the water park or not, so.
Community center was always a destination to have a water tank on property and it never did get built.
Okay, and like I said, I'm just trying to educate myself.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And as, as we address the infrastructure needs of this, this city, you're right. There's people with, it's because of a stormwater, a sewer system that's, that's old.
Right.
You know, and to fix that old, what, 30, 40 years of not doing much about it, it's gonna take a lot of money to fix that. It's gonna take, anytime we talk about, we talk about streets, infrastructure, streets, we don't have the capital. So, yeah, if we're gonna fix it, it's gonna be a bond issue. This is not a bond issue. This is a loan, the way I understand, this is a loan lease. And then the money that, where it's not gonna cost the city, the money that, the way I understand this and the way Dick, we talked about this, was when this firehouse is paid off, that money is gonna be used. We're gonna extend that to pay our portion of that water tank.
Okay.
You know, so, it's not gonna be coming out of a general fund.
It'll never come from general tax costs.
It's never coming out of general-
Thank you.
And there are, there is opposition to this.
Right.
And I've been getting some calls too, but it's opposition to the water park. You know, and the voters voted for that water park, so I, I'm not gonna get in its way.
Okay.
But I wanna make sure, doing research on this, the whole Progress Parkway, the nursing home, the community center, the water pressure, stinks. And if we're gonna talk about a subdivision up there and how's that, that's gonna benefit hopefully the city one day when we're gonna have water.
And hopefully, one day, we get some industrial development.
Sure.
They're gonna need water.
Right.
So, and I agree with you, Gary, though, I mean, we need to, we need to find all that stuff out.
Right, cool.
You know.
And I wasn't trying to be argumentative, I just-
No, no, it's all valid questions.
So, I truly appreciate the input and I'm sure you'll educate me much more.
You know, one of the biggest things for me, Gary, getting on board, was having that hundred-plus-bed nursing home up there and we're pumping pressure there. We have no gravity bed pressure there. In the event of a major fire, we're relying on pumps.
Is that right?
Right.
Okay, alright.
Pumps that fail.
Yeah.
You know, we've had some, a lot of discussion with, with Steve about that. You know, we have pumps that are, we talked about tanks versus tower and then your, the maintenance on pumps, this tank is the way to go.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure that I could speak intelligently. Thank you very much, sir.
Sure.
Any other questions? Hold on.
Yeah, just one.
Go ahead, Bob.
In picking a design for this water tower and stuff, I mean, you know, do we take any consideration maintenance? And Steve, you had an opinion?
Each tank, each tank design comes with its own set of maintenance issues. There's single column pedestal tanks, which are low-cost, low-maintenance.
Steve, come to the podium, please.
There's, there's different kinds of tank designs. They all have their own different quirks, different issues. Like a single column pedestal tank, there's less steel exposed, there's less paint maintenance, there's more, less rust, less corrosion issues. Altogether, lower maintenance cost over the years and the life expectancy of the tank. You could have like a fluted column hydro pillar, which would be an elevated tank like we have on Progress. Again, you have more surface area, more welds, a little more maintenance cost than the single column. If you go to a leg tank, you've got tension wires, you've got legs, substantially more welds. The rounded surfaces are all exposed to the elements. More maintenance cost with that one than the other two. So, each one has its own.
So, are you involved in the choice?
I'd like to think I would be.
We haven't gotten to that point yet. We're hardly getting there yet.
And we'll bid in a manner that allows us to look at the options, including volumes and the types of tanks.
Well, that was gonna be my question, was how do we ascertain what exactly we need without going too far? We need to think in the future, but-
Sure.
You know, how do, how do we calculate, we know what the water park needs. How do we know?
We're, we're taking a look at water quality, making sure we're not creating water quality issue by having too much storage, obviously.
Right.
There's a, there's a need there. As you know, there's a shortfall that we can also satisfy, of course, with part of this project. There's, there's truly three factors in those nine that really help us choose a size. But like I said, we could possibly go up or down. And I've, from my experience, I've seen tank manufacturers bid a little bit larger tank, actually cheaper than one a little bit smaller. I'm not sure if it's because they just happen to have a better, a better ability to build that tank or what it might be. The multi-leg tanks tend to be cheaper on the construction side, but they're more expensive on long-term maintenance. And so, we'll, we'll look at all of that, cost compare, to your point, look out there and see what makes the most sense. As you know, steel prices right now, you know, we, all that's gonna play into it. So, we'll give you, give you all the options we can, so we can make the best decision at the time.
Any more questions? Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion to approve.
This is the first, this is the first reading on this?
Yes.
I'll make a second on that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion, proceed with second reading.
Could I actually have more time to look into this? Please?
Well, time is kind of of the essence of this, but it's the board's decision.
Are you aware of their projected start date? No, their projected start date for the water park? What's that? May 2019.
Of next year?
No, they're gonna, they're, they're gonna be starting this year.
That's when they wanna open though.
Yeah, next year, yeah, they wanna open next year.
Right.
I'll second that.
Alright, so, I have a, a motion first and a second, so we'll take a roll call vote.
For the second reading.
For the second reading? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
No, I'm opposed.
Okay, wanna oppose? Okay, bill number, be the second reading of bill number 4216, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a proposal for professional design services with Cochrane Engineering for a new elevated storage tank on Progress Parkway? Move approval.
Second.
Alright, now we'll have a roll call vote.
Alderman Rozicka?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
No. But Alderman Jones.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Jones. I said, whatever. Thank you. Six yes, one no, one absent. Bill number 4216 now becomes ordinance 4145.
Alrighty. Any other business? Just like to say, I've got this mayor board of Alderman Communications. You know, I appreciate all your help in this, my first year as mayor. It's been quite interesting and I've, I've learned a lot. And still have a lot to learn. I wanna thank Martin and everybody here has been bearing with me to do, do some things. And it's been a little bit challenging, but you know what? The people of this fine city depend on us. I think this year ahead, we're gonna, we're gonna face some more issues that are gonna have to be dealt with, some hard decisions. And I appreciate this board and all the work that y'all do and support that I've had and the help. Joe, you got anything else to add? I'm sure you'll make a motion to close. All in favor?
Aye.